Welcome to the North Beach Town Council Work Session for Thursday, April the 23rd, 2020. Due to the current public health emergency, the governor's stay-at-home order has set forth an executive order 20-03-30-01. In the sincere desire of the mayor and town council to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to the maximum extent possible, the general public may not enter Town Hall. Therefore, this meeting of the town council will proceed virtually as permitted under the Maryland Open Meetings Act. The public is invited and encouraged to attend the meeting remotely. I request all attendees mute their microphones until it is your turn to speak. Council members, you will be called on to speak by the moderator Stacy Miler according to your last name after each item introduction and explanation. And at this time, I will call the roll. Mayor Benton?
Here.
Mr. Dotson?
Here.
Ms. Hagan? Ms. Hagan, she's muted. Paul, can you unmute her?
I did, it's okay. I'm here.
Mr. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Lawton?
Here.
Mrs. Shaita?
Here.
And Mr. Troncone?
Here.
Okay, Mayor Benton?
All right, well, let's call, let's call to order our work session April 23rd. And tonight's, our discussion is the water and sewer budget. And we all know that this is Joe's favorite time of the year. We are just focusing tonight on the water and sewer, and there's a lot of moving parts with the water and sewer. I know we usually, we don't usually do the pledge, but I'm going to move right into, I guess, open up the public comment. I, oh, you mentioned there was a couple people on here?
Yes, we have about three or four people on here.
If, if anybody has any questions, type it in a chat line. Also, if you have questions after this meeting, just shoot us an email, we will respond. You know, this is all new territory, even though this is like our fourth one, something like that.
Can I, I can ask a question real quick? So Mayor and Joanne, we're only talking about the water and sewer tonight, we're not talking capital projects?
That's correct.
Okay, because I had, I had advertised capital projects also, just to be clear.
I'm aware.
Okay, perfect, thank you, just to be clear. Okay?
All right, well, let's, what's that?
I don't see any public comment right now.
All right, and again, whomever's watching, listening, if you have questions, email them to us, we will answer your questions as possible. Let's move right into the business side and discussion, discussion of the water and sewer proposals fiscal year 21 budget. And Joe, why don't you lead us off?
Okay, let me share my screen so we're all seeing the same thing. All right, I sent you out the spreadsheet that has the notes in it. There, right now, I'm going to work on the water one first, the water tab. There was one typo that I had in this item right here under proposed. I had the minimum at 8,000 reduced to six. It's currently at 6,000, and I corrected it in my notes, but I did not correct it on the spreadsheet yet. So you, just so you're aware, full disclosure. So we're currently at 6,000 as the minimum, and five would be our next step or lower, depending on where the council decides we need to be in our conservation plan. Basically, for the water fund, there's no drastic changes to the fund. There are a few minor requests. For example, the salary and wages, that reflects the 2% COLA that was outlined in the general fund budget that you received over a week ago. That gets split out, it's 40% general, and then 30% sewer and 30% water. That's the standard rate for breaking down all wages. Then we have the launch, which we did last year, we're coming down to note 59 and 60, because like I said, there's not a lot of change in the water fund. So those are the notes that I have. The 13.6 is the utility service maintenance for the water tower. They take care of everything we need for the tower, the cleaning, the inspections, they're done annually. So that's why we pay this note every year to take care of that. And then the one item that has changed from last year, because I like to go over all the things that have changed, bring into your attention, is 61, number 61. We had allocated $67,000 for capital costs to rate, to pay back for the water meters that we were purchasing. It was a $143,000 project, I believe, off the top of my head. And we were going to self-fund that project over the next few years. Well, in order to offset some of this, some of the cost, I've had to reduce from 67,000 to 48,000, and that's why that number is different this year, in order to keep the water fund at the same rate. I don't feel that that's going to hurt us. It, matter of fact, it can't hurt us in the water fund. Water fund is the most stable of all the funds, because it's the least, it's the least emergency-oriented situations we have. The, the worst fund for us to deal with tonight is going to be the sewer fund, and we're going to, we're going to spend a lot of time on the sewer fund. So does anyone have anything specific that they would like to address on the water? Or have I covered everything for you for the water fund?
Joanne, I just have a question.
Yes?
Just a reminder, so, you know, when we redid all the water and the, the, you know, gallons, and we redid that a couple years ago?
Yes.
Was it, was this the timeline that we are looking at to reduce it to the 5,000? I mean, we had this kind of graded plan.
Well, we did, we, we had the perfect, well, I wouldn't say it was a perfect plan, and you'll have to excuse me, I've got a call. But it was delayed due to, a couple years ago, right around, I want to say, right before the election, it was delayed a little bit. So that kind of threw the timeline off. So you're not exactly, you would be, you would be even further along had we stuck with the plan. You would be at around the 3,000 minimum or less, but we're at the five. And even last year, I had reduced it by two more thousand, and I was asked not to take it so far down to bring it back up to six. So that's, that's where we've kind of maneuvered through this to reduce the impact on the residents.
Right.
So, no, we're not where we originally started, but we're still within, we're still within a good guideline of what we had intended.
Right, okay, so we haven't been as aggressive as that original plan. We're still, okay, that, that's exactly, that's, that's what I wanted to know. All right, thank you.
We started at 10,000 gallons as minimum.
Yes.
Right, and then we revised it to have this graded plan, but I couldn't remember according to that graded plan where we should be, but you're saying we would even be more aggressive if we had actually stuck to it. So we, we've done it in a slower pace, which is, which is okay.
Right, because we, we had a plan, but life happens.
Right, right, okay, no, that's, that's good. All right, so if we do bring it down a little bit more, we're still not being as aggressive as originally planned.
That is correct.
Right, okay.
And I, I can show you what those other numbers would look like, I can send you another spreadsheet that shows the 3,000 and the 4,000.
I would love that, yeah, from that.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
I'll show them to you, and you'll, you'll ultimately make the decision.
Perfect, thanks.
That's where we are with the water fund and how it relates. Does anyone have anything else on the water fund? Like I said, there weren't really many, any changes really for the water fund. Later, after we get done these two, we will talk about the two capital projects that are sewer-related, and then one water, but I'll get to that after we're done here. So can I move on to sewer? Does anyone have any questions?
I'm good.
Good? All right, I just didn't want to jump ahead, I'm going to move to the sewer tab. Okay, so sewer is the most expensive of the two utility funds that we have, and with sewer, there's some unknowns, and the budget that you have before you is based on the best-case scenario that we know at this time. And the reason I say that is because there are two capital projects, very large capital projects, that are not reflected in here, that are very fluid. And I say that not because of something that we're doing, but it's something that takes all the partners to agree as far as the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe the mayor has updated you individually under the situation, am I correct?
Off and on, my last email, I gave a little bit, but we can be, so, you mind if I?
No, you go right ahead.
All right, so basically, we have a, an agreement, a partnership between Calver County, Chesapeake Beach, and Rundle County and ourselves with the wastewater treatment plant. So when it comes to Calver County, we have an agreement with them in, in really two forms. The first one is everything that's coming west of Greenwood that goes through our two pumping stations, which is Greenwood and Chesapeake Avenue, there's a, an agreement. Recently, we've had that modified, it used to be 65-35, now it's 50-50, so we've improved that. Now, out of that, they've put in flow meters at the, at all their sections coming into the town, and then you'll see on the budget here what they call a share flow meter, and that is now we have one that's right outside of Neptune's to see the flow going out of our town. So our first agreement was with Calver County. Julie Palota and Mark Willis and the staff, Danielle and all them have been amazing working on this, and we've improved immensely for our residents in our town over the last six months. The second agreement is our partnership with the other entities, and that is the running or the operation of the wastewater treatment plant that's right to Chesapeake Beach. The two projects, one of the projects Joe is talking about is a massive upgrade or repair or whatever you want to call it, and we can't, we, it's not, we're not at a point yet to figure out a number yet, because we, we all, as partners, we have quarterly meetings now to discuss the expenses. So what you're not going to see is that on here, because it's nothing we did, it's just, there's four hands in the pot, and we're doing our best to make sure that our residents are taken care of. Also, with the actual flow that are leaving, that, that we're measuring from our town through three items, the water tower, what's it called, Joe, biometrics? What is it?
Oh, my goodness, volumetrics.
Volumetrics and our flow meters, and we're going to improve on those two. So the sewer, as Joe said, is one of our biggest impacts. Matter of fact, the last two big projects in the last two weeks that DPW had to do during this COVID-19 was we had two bad sewer lines. One BG&E drilled through it, the other one, a massive tree went through it. So the sewer is something that we know if it's not right, you're going to know about it, so that's the reason why the cost and the dollar amounts are what they are compared to the water side of it. So that's a quick update, when we have the facts for you, obviously, council, you'll be updated the second we know more. Joe, you could take back over.
Okay, one of, the other project that's going to bear on this fund is the improvements that are going to be needed at the Greenwood Station, and Donnie's going to provide more information on that. But again, that's a partnership that we have with Calver County. And Calver County needs to be brought online before we proceed with a project of that size, it's a $100,000 project, excuse me.
It's 100 to 150.
And there, there is some creative talking going on as we move forward, so that's why you don't have that number reflected in this budget yet, because that will also impact the user rates that we're going to set. And those are big items, and you know the dollar amount for the wastewater treatment plant, that capital project, we were made aware of it about a month ago, and that's not, we're looking for 935,000. We say it should be around 200,000, so.
Not from us, total, total, and that we percentage.
Total. So I have a, a protected us a portion of that capital improvement within my own budget here, but I'm waiting for the other shoe to drop once we get further along in this, what would you call it, negotiation, Mayor, or?
I've learned more, in the last 18 months, I've learned more about wastewater than I ever thought I would ever know in my life, but yes, between DB and Joe and everybody else, it's been a, it's, it's been a process, negotiation, definitely, education, definitely, frustration, yeah, definitely, so we will let you know as we know more with that.
Yeah, and, but I do, I tell you, and if, if the mayor's updated you, then you're aware, we have methods that we've set in place between us and the county and Ann Rundle, so that we can reconcile those numbers that we're being charged at the plan. So no more are we just blindly accepting the numbers that are given to us, we're able to reconcile to a number, which we never had that functionality before, so I'm with that. But again, you know that this, just so you're aware, this budget will come up again, but we are not there, but let's review what we have, okay? So this sewer, the, the capital budget is the issue, and that's going to be the one that's going to affect the rates, which is at the top, so number 52, it's going to be fluid. And then this one is 53, the overtime for the Public Works crew, whenever they have to come in on the weekends to service the pump stations, because that's a every day, seven days a week, 24/7. That was increased last year, so it's the same this year. I just want to make you aware.
Hey, Joanne, let me, can I jump in one second? Also, because of the COVID-19, people are staying home during the day instead of driving to work, so I know this sounds, but they're using the bathroom a lot more. And right now, on Greenwood Avenue, if you ever see the backhoe driving up 8th Street from Dayton, it's because they have to lift the pump out because it's clogged with wipes. So that's happening a couple times a week now, not, so DPW actually, when they come in on the weekends, they're checking for that, because we get the high meter readings. So that's another reason why we're, we're going to be pushing towards upgrading Greenwood, but also, we're working with Calver County to continue to educate their, their, their residents, just like we are. But with people staying home now, not using their bathrooms at their restaurants or wherever they work, we have seen an increase in volume, which is probably expected.
How much does that cost every time we have to pull that out and, and unclog?
Couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, it, it can add up, depending on what length of time it is, how long it takes them to do it.
Right.
What the weather is, I mean, right now, we're in good weather, but in the wintertime, it's difficult.
So how much of that comes from Calvert County and how much comes from us?
What, the waste?
Yeah.
It's 50-50.
50-50.
You're talking about the wipe, you're talking about the wipes, the clogging, right, Jane?
50-50, because we have just as many homes going through Greenwood as they do.
Okay, and I have another question.
Yes.
This is going to really date me, because I'm old, but anyway, I always thought that if you worked overtime on a Saturday, it was time and a half, and on Sunday, it was double time. When did you go to double time both times? Both days?
It's, it's, it's something that, as an incentive for Public Works to do, to keep peoples, to be able to respond in an emergent situation on the weekends.
Yeah.
It's something that Public Works has kind of worked out.
Once staff member's always on call on every weekend, and I, we can, yet they haven't had to come in, so it's a major disruption in their life, and it's not just Greenwood, it's all over, we, we answer calls all over town. So, and that's the reason why that's like that. Good question, though.
Okay, you did see that we had a reduction in workman's comp insurance, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why is that? How did that go down?
Yeah, it went down because we haven't had a lot of claims.
Okay.
So that's an improvement.
Like half.
And you've seen the new cost share for the flow meter, which is 35, is our portion, And then, well, that's complete. Again, not a lot, not a lot. The only thing left hanging, again, is those two large capital improvements, which we'll get into. And I don't, unfortunately, I don't have any information I can give you right now, but as we get into our next meeting, which is the first week of May, correct?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, next Thursday.
Can I ask a question on those?
Yes, I am.
Well, two, two questions. Do we know what the, when we talk about the shared portion, the percentage, is that also being negotiated in terms of what our percentage that we'll have to pay on those big projects? Is, do we know what that is, or is that?
We know that. It's agreement that was written when they did the upgrade, and Joe has it.
Yeah, we, our percentage is set at the plant, that's agreed upon with all the partners. Now, like the mayor was telling you earlier, we, we renegotiated with Calver County for those lines and pump station that they utilize to carry their waste to the plant, and that's at 50% now.
And what, what about with Chesapeake Beach? What's that percentage?
The percent is 39.09 for the flow, the variable flow, and you'll love this, they base it on 2018's numbers, okay, which drives me crazy. And then the fixed is at, I think it's at 18 or 19% of the plant, that's a fixed number.
Okay. So like on that 900 and whatever, we would be paying the 39% or the 18?
The 18.
18.
Okay, whatever that number. And what is the time, will we have those numbers by the time we have to vote on this budget? What, when will we have those actual numbers?
We believe that, in all reality, they should have them to us before then, but again, the point of contention is not so much the, all the partners, there's only one particular partner that has an issue, so.
Right, so, so basically, we're hoping, Gwen, and, and everybody, we're waiting for a letter from MDE to come in, they are, and we, we expected it yesterday or today. We've, we, it's a lot of great people at the table that are all these partners, and really, Joe and I are there to assist where they need us, but they're all really experienced with this, so we're hoping in the next couple of days, we, we can have an agreement what phase one's going to be, and then we should be able to have it before we have to vote on this in June.
Definitely.
You know, but, but because there's four partners, and now we do quarterly partner meetings, there's a lot more discussions than before, so we feel very confident you guys will be able to understand, know the numbers before we have to vote.
Okay.
We hope.
I found it interesting today that in the paper, which came out Wednesday, the Chesapeake Beach already approved their budget.
Yeah, they do theirs in phases, they have five.
The different ones that are proven.
Yeah.
Oh, it sounded like the article made it sound like they approved the whole thing.
No, I don't think so.
Let's hope not.
Might be the general fund.
But listen, listen, there's one thing I want to say, as far as I'm concerned, we bill quarterly for water and sewer. So even if, we're not going to be rushed or bullied into anything by anybody at the plant, so we're going to take our time and we're going to make sure we get it right. So the worst-case scenario would happen, would be that we go past July 1, and we don't have all the numbers reflected in our budget. Our first billing for the quarter of FY '21 does not occur until October. So as far as I'm concerned, we can talk about this and work it until we get it right, all the way up until September 30th, if we have to.
Yeah, we're going to get it. They're going, like I said, this is new, I mean, just the partners' meetings, you know, we have 12, 15 people at the table, and I think it's been a lot of great dialogue to this point. It just, just, we have to, you know, we all have our thoughts, and we're going to come to agreement, one way or another, so far, I believe, I believe in the end, it's all going to work out for the best for all of us.
Yeah, so I don't want you to.
Trying to get a sense of timeline and.
Rush.
Perfect.
Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping, we're pushing it.
All right, I sent you some other information today, I didn't distribute that on the. But I want you to take a look at it, it has where we're at now with the rates, what the rates would look like at the 5,000 minimum, and I will send you the three and the four, like I promised at the beginning of the meeting, so that you can look at those also. And then in the spreadsheet, there's another tab, I went through all of our customers, and I took an average of their usage, and based on the average, I came out with, if we, if we set the rate at what I have for the 5,000 minimum, and we drop that tier so that we only have the two tiers, because remember, that's part of the plan, get down to one tier, we would still have two tiers, not three. That's what that revenue would reflect, it's at the bottom of that spreadsheet, which covers the cost in your two budgets as they stand now. So I want to make sure that you had all the information to make a informed decision about that.
Joe, you're talking about this, correct?
Yes.
And then on the back is the number, and it shows you the water usage.
I don't have that.
And then what it's calculated out, for those who are grouped in different.
It was, it was with these.
It was with you, it was on your email.
Yes, three attachments on one email.
Yes, it shows you what the county is, the county, if you guys don't remember, I may remind you, the county's rate for Twin Beach area for sewer and water combined, their, their flat rate is $166 and some change. They don't have a minimum, there is zero minimum, and then you pay per thousand gallons, so you pay for what you use. So their minimum's higher, and then you pay for every thousand gallons that you use. So when we started the, the water conservation, we were also doing the restructuring of the rates, eventually to mimic what Calver County has. So I just want to, again, I included that so you're aware.
And there's been an article that they're going to raise theirs, yeah.
Well, just like us, with the capital costs that we're debating, maybe, but you know, you can't make those decisions in a moment, you've got the plan. Your customers don't like to.
And we're all customers. Any, any questions from, for Joe about this? As you can tell, she's gone through the numbers very, and we've talked about this about 200 times, so.
Right, Joanne, thanks.
You're welcome, I'm here for you, send me an email if you need something. Anybody, everybody good?
Yep, looks good.
This one, excuse me, I want to be sure that I'm looking at the right things, so we're looking at a 5,000 gallon minimum or a 6?
Five.
A 5.
We're at 6 now.
We're at 6 now.
Okay. Yep.
And our ultimate goal when we started this was for conservation, but also, you know, pay for what you use, instead of it just made sense for the environment, and also our aquifer that we tap into, so. I'm sure there's more elegant reasons other than that, but.
Well, the best, the biggest reason is if we can keep water consumption down, we can reduce the amount of sewage that goes to the plant. That does not, so we don't have to do another expansion to the tune of $5 million. So this is another good reason, it's all about
Absolutely.
keeping our costs down.
You know, it's interesting, during, during this coronavirus thing, they've done a lot of studies on people washing, hand washing their dishes or using a dishwasher. And hands down, you use less water if you use a dishwasher.
Yes.
Some people don't believe that.
Especially like a, you know, a modern one.
Right.
Energy efficient.
Yep.
Interesting, I run mine every day.
Me too. They say you use 20 gallons if you do it manually.
People just let the water run.
Yeah, most people do.
Well, I see dollar signs when my water runs. I try not to.
I found a leak, almost had a heart attack. Other than my teenager home from college. So does anybody have any questions for Joe? I don't want to cut anybody off.
Nope.
Nope, all right, well, I appreciate you coming out tonight. Joe, thank you for your hard work, and should you have about both budgets now? The next one we'll be tackling is the capital improvements, but please. Go ahead.
I stay incorrect, next week is the 30th of April, so.
I thought so.
It's like, we have one more week in April.
I thought so, yes. I, I'm preparing for two weeks from now, yes.
All right, prepare for two weeks from now. Other than that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second. Second, all right, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
You.
Good night.
Thank you so much.
Have a good week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.